Awesome, thanks. Okay. It is six o'clock, 6:01 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. This evening, I'd like to ask for the invitation to be given by TJ Wilkerson.
So I would come tonight with humble hearts and bow here. We come thanking you for all that you've given us, Lord. We come thanking you that we stand on principle of integrity and stand on our words, Lord, that we come not, Lord, for a personal agenda, that we come representing this city, the citizens of this city, and the government of the people in front of people. We thank you for all that you've done for us, Lord. God, as in what we do, give us understanding and peace and patience with each other. And in Jesus' name, we pray amen.
Amen. All right. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, under God, one and indivisible.
As we've heard, we've got a very special visitor this weekend, this evening tonight, our citizens and visitors forum, Aaron Richard. Would you like to make an introduction, please?
Yes. Received press release from hydroencephalouskids.org from Michael Illions announcing that Montgomery's Kaylee May Linger has been announced as the 2020 National Ambassador for Hydroencephalous Awareness for Incurable Brain Condition. She's the co-organizer for the organization. It's a rather lengthy press release, but I'll read a couple of the key points out of here. You had almost four years old. Kaylee has never lost her smile or her courage. Diagnosed with an incurable brain condition before she was born, Kaylee has already faced six life-saving brain surgeries before her fourth birthday in April. As if the brain surgeries weren't enough in a battle with meningitis, Kaylee May has gone through seven additional surgeries for various things, from tubes for her ears, surgery on her feet, and back to a major cranial reconstruction. Kaylee May was selected as one of the two children to serve as this year's National Ambassador for Hydroencephalous Awareness for the Pediatric Hydroencephalous Foundation to help raise the level of awareness and education about hydroencephalus in the United States. Kaylee May, whose family lives in Montgomery, Texas, will represent the girls, while eight-year-old Jared Stalberries of Tennessee will represent the boys. Yep. I would also like to add, you know, this is not, you know, at City Hall, our first meeting with Kaylee, as she is part of a crack rock-finding duo, you know, team here that has returned several of the rocks more than anyone else since we've been hiding them for a couple contests. So, you know, her story is already somewhat known in City Hall, and is probably well on her way to becoming a legend, because if there's any good finder of hidden materials out there in the city, we're finding that the Lingers are definitely people.
Good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a, I'd like to read the City of Montgomery, Texas, the proclamation that goes along. City of Montgomery, Texas proclamation, whereas occurring in approximately one of every 500 births in over 1 million Americans today, hydrocephalus is a condition in which excessive fluid gathers in the brain, abnormally widening spaces in the brain, and placing potentially harmful pressure on brain tissue. And whereas, in 2009, the United States House of Representatives passed a resolution designating the month of September as National Hydrocephalus Awareness Month. And whereas, at almost four years old, Kaylee May Linger was diagnosed with an incurable brain condition before she was born, and has already faced six life-saving brain surgeries before her fourth birthday in April. Whereas Kaylee May also had a battle with meningitis and has gone through several additional surgeries for various things, from tubes in her ears, surgery on her feet, and back to a major. Whereas Kaylee May, who lives in Montgomery, was selected as one of the two children to serve as this year's National Ambassador of Hydrocephalus Awareness for the Pediatric Hydrocephalus Foundation to help raise the level of awareness and education about hydrocephalus in the United States. Whereas Kaylee May, whose family lives in Montgomery, Texas, will represent the girls, while eight-year-old Jared Albers of Tennessee will represent the boys. Now, therefore, I, Sarah Countryman, Mayor of the City of Montgomery, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Hydrocephalus Awareness Month, and recognize Kaylee May Linger of Montgomery, Texas, as the 2020 Female Pediatric Hydrocephalus Ambassador. Kaylee, you can get your proclamation signed at City Hall tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Stick around if you'd like, your city business.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Kay.
Say bye.
I love it. We got tons of waves from everybody. All right. First thing on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes on September 8th.
I don't have any comments about the minute.
Nor do I. Let's go ahead and move to accept the Consent Agenda.
Second.
As we moved to second, that we accept the Consent Agenda. This motion is debatable. A minimal requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the Consent Agenda. Next on your agenda, consideration of possible action. Item number two, consideration of possible action on departmental reports. A, the City Administrator's Report. Richard?
All right. Thank you this evening. I'll go ahead and, as has been the norm, not just summarize my report, but also the departmental reports. If there's a particular item on one of those reports that I don't entirely mention that someone has an answer or a question on, we have the department heads available here for the call, so just let me know. Just starting with my report, you know, we kind of had, we've had a recent overlap of tropical activity. You know, we had Hurricane Laura preparation, you know, a couple weeks ago, and fortunately, the primary storm activities missed us. We had some electrical issues with brownouts from supply-related issues from energy, because I think as more people know now than did before, you know, our electrical supply comes from the eastern area from here. So, and then now we have the bands out there right now just causing rain out here from tropical storm beta. So, you know, kind of interesting how those storms practically butted up against each other, but ending up with a report in the same meeting.
Can they hear me?
Yeah. As I said, said before here in recent months, our work continues as normally as possible during the pandemic. You know, it's like, I don't want to admit that, you know, the pandemic operating procedures are going to become normal, but we're trying to keep it as normal as possible and keep the full range of services open to the public. Yep. We've had great progress this month on our home grant homes. Three of them are well on their way towards completion right now. The fourth is early in the construction process, but we're definitely looking at a timeline in the relatively near future where these homes will start to be completed. In the, you know, recently, we just posted an RFQ on the city's website and advertising for the city engineer that was previously authorized by City Council. Those responses are due back by October 13th, and I envision this will be much like the city attorney RFQ, where we'll set up an interview process with the top firms with City Council. Planning and zoning terms are expiring in October. We're currently accepting applications through October 16th. That'll give staff time to vet those and supply those to City Council for selections prior to the end of October. And as a reminder, I told council before, I'll be out of the office through the end of next week, but I am available if needed. Moving on to the public works, obviously, there was departmental prep there for both Hurricane Laura, Tropical Storm Beta. They replaced two irrigation nodes at Memory Park, and Fernland reported 418 visitors and 25 scheduled tours from the dozens records. And some of you may have seen either around town or likely on social media, Public Works had completed the first goat silhouette cutout as part of the city's social media icon campaign, where we have a, you know, three-dimensional goat with the Texas flag logo on it, you know, represented there. You begin to see more of that around town and on social media as well. In the Police Department this month, they had no major incidents to report this month. They're working with several groups who are planning or considering local events. One of those is on the agenda for action here later. And also, I'm happy to report that Officer Bauer has been promoted to the rank of Sergeant within the department. So, I think it's always good to see, you know, promotion from among our own that way, and I think Officer Bauer is very deserving. In the Court Department, I believe their report is pretty much self-explanatory. It's, you know, of the type that normally is there. In the Utility Department, the report, there are no large miscellaneous categories of income in the month's report. In the Arrears categories, accounts that are on payment plans that are being properly paid, they're considered current accounts, so they're not reported in later categories. And that is, as been previously explained, there is a setting through the software that allows those amounts from payment plans to be run in there, so they're automatically billed to the customers, so it doesn't require additional math on the part of staff to properly enter. The category of 120-day-plus that's currently shown, those are closed accounts for people left with an outstanding balance. You know, we should always plan to review those at least annually, if not semi-annually, to prevent them from building up to a large amount, this happened in the past. Before considering any final action, we would always try to make at least a final effort to collect and reach out to those one more time.
Or send them to collections for professionals to find them.
Right. Well, it might just, might just be that sending a letter to them results in a payment, and we get 100% of that payment.
Right.
That we have 845 current active accounts. A year ago, we had 784. That's nearly an 8% growth rate over the last year, which is pretty significant. And in addition to that, you know, we do have a fair amount of construction continuing to move forward, so we are seeing a strong growth of residential construction. There's also quite a bit of commercial construction going on out in the city. You just have to look at the construction at the shops of Montgomery to see that, and just talking about one location there. The water consumption charts were also adjusted so that the scale of use of the larger accounts doesn't throw off the imaging, so you can't have trouble reading how the smaller accounts. I know I went through several departments pretty quickly. If anyone has any questions, either I or the department heads would be happy to try to take those. Otherwise, I'll be happy to pass on to Gulf Utility.
On the, I had a question about the usage for Cedar Break Park Restrooms. Not sure why it's so high. It normally runs 1,000 or two just for the restroom there. And last, it was 14,000 in July and 12,000 again. That's quite a bit just for that restroom. We don't have a leak, do we, somewhere? Something maybe they may want to look at.
Yeah, well, that, I'll definitely.
I'm sorry. I was, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking for the mute button. Actually, I'm not sure about that one, Randy. Let me look at that, and I'll try to get an answer for you shortly, maybe before the reports are over with. Let me look at their chart real quick.
Okay. And Mike, about the sewer plant flow, that's been like 1,000 ever since we put that bleach injection pump in, you know, from 200,000 to about 1,000 for the restroom, and it's been creeping up. Do we use it more, more than just for the little restroom there at the sewer plant?
Well, just recently, the contractor for the lift station one project has been using it a lot at their project. They've got a water hose ran from our office to the back.
Okay. I got you.
So that's, that's what that, yeah, that's what that's been the last couple of months.
Okay.
But if I don't get an answer by the end of the reports, I'll get back with you tomorrow on the restrooms at Cedar Break.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, I had a good question. This is Kevin. Who controls the fountain over at Memory Park? Is that, is that not working, or is it just shut off right now?
Well, the, so I think it went down whenever we lost power at the last outage. And so we went out and checked it out today, and it looks like the actual motor could be burnt up on it. So we're, we've got Solomon Electric looking at getting a replacement for it and putting a kind of a fail-safe switch on it to where it will not kick back on whenever we lose electricity.
Okay, cool. Another thing, too.
To investigate.
Okay. I know, I was gonna ask about the water level at Cedar Break Park, too. I'm sure it's gonna be going, not Cedar Break, Memory Park as well. I'm sure it's gonna be going back up after the rain we've had. Do we typically just let it go down that low? Because it's been pretty low.
The, you're talking about the level of the pond?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So we honestly try not to do anything to it as far as adding water until we talk to Rotary, because Rotary has a real good eye for when the levels get low enough to worry about the fish, because it takes, it takes an absolute ton of water to fill that thing up. We haven't had to do it yet this year, so keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
And hopefully with this rain, it will come back up to normal.
And the only reason I ask, I understand that. It seems like, you know, I've been going there for about a year and a half now, it seems like the lower the water is, the more snakes we see. I don't know why that is, but we have our little walks around the park.
I don't know.
Yeah, my son and I have encountered a moxie every single time when that water gets low for some reason. So just, just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. I haven't heard that, haven't heard that yet. I don't know why that would be, but.
Probably no coincidence at all, just our luck, most likely.
Could be.
Well, overall, wildlife is, gets more desperate, and, you know, the only reliable water source is probably right there, so it doesn't have anything to do with, per se, the water level itself, but just the lack of availability everywhere else. Because we get that too, that we get that too with our ponds. We start seeing quite a bit more activity.
That's probably it. Yep. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions? All right, then I can throw to Gulf for their report next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have your August operations report. We have a number of district alerts. A majority of those are due to power issues or pumps racking up, nothing really out of the ordinary. So unless you'll have any questions about that, I'll move on to the next page.
Just a quick question, Michael. This is all related to the specific power outages that the whole city experienced. This isn't a return to the dirty power that we were having issues with. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We haven't had any issues of dirty power this summer preventing any of our plants from running.
Okay. Great.
All right. On to the next page. We have your wastewater plant flow detail. Flow for the month of August was 4,552,000 gallons. Daily peak flow is August 8th, that 226,000 gallons. Our daily average flow was 146,800 gallons, which comes out to 37% of our permitted capacity at that plant. Page five, we have your discharge limitations and your, and your affluent monitoring report. All samples were compliance for the month of August. We recorded 1.5 inches of rain. Below that is your corresponding visual rain gauge. Page six, we have your water report. We sourced a total of 12.368 million gallons, had a flushing of 227,000 gallons, and we sold 14,799,000 gallons, bringing us to 100% accountability. And below, below that's your connection count, totaling 970 connections. Page seven is your groundwater projection chart with a 13-month history. Page eight is your water accountability chart with 13-month history. And that concludes our report. And unless Council has any other questions.
Just a thought on the total amount produced, that just over 15 million gallons versus last September doing 19 million gallons. That's a, you know, $4 million or $4 million gallon difference when we've got, you know, a fair number of additional connections. Randy, do you know, and it was a dry, it's been a dry month. Okay. Well, the leak was only, the leak was only, only a million gallons, though, right?
I don't think so.
It was bigger than that? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Might be the schools, too, the difference.
No, the difference is the leak.
Okay.
I apologize. I failed to point out the note below the chart on page six, where well three, well three had gone down. We did calculate the flows.
I was gonna say, you're kind of estimating it, so you should be roughly in the ballpark, because you didn't say that our accountability was better or worse than 100. So.
Yes.
I was just wondering if our behavior was different in terms of, I mean, it's something Randy's been talking about for a while, that, you know, we might get to lower usage with higher prices, although we haven't raised prices for a while, so I was just wondering if that was the driver.
Yeah, we had to, we estimated the flow based off of the well's elapsed time meter, so we're able to get our, our actual amount of time that the well ran compared to flows that we received out of the wells before and after that time period. So, pretty confident in that number that we came up with, but.
Oh, you kind of use the runtime, kind of like you do the lift stations, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But more accurate, but more accurately, because it's less chunky.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yes, definitely less chunky.
Well, hopefully in the next month, we'll have a good month. I know the last three months, you know, we kind of overbuild, then we underbuild, and then, and then the water meter went out. So the last three or four months have not really kind of been, I guess, the own spot, been kind of all over. I think realistically, they're probably averaging around 95%.
Just curious if we are seeing a difference in behavior year on year to account for the difference, but you think it's all a $4 million gallon leak?
Yeah, if you look back at last August and September, yeah, we still had the hydrant leaking over there, so there's a quite a bit of water went that, went that direction. And then plus, the summer, the irrigation was very high, but about a month off last year than it is this year. And obviously, with the rain we're having lately, we'll see it fall like a rock.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Randy. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you all.
Next, the financial report and quarterly investment report. Anthony?
All righty. Good evening, everybody. Not too much to report on the financials this month. Everything looked pretty smooth, but I will go over some of the highlights. On your, on page number three, for your operating fund, after everything has been up to date as today, you're a little over five months of reserve in that fund now. For your MEDC, close to two and a half years reserve, and then roughly 10 months reserve for your utility fund. On your cash flow, you did receive your sales tax of $375,019.12. Of course, a quarter of that was also transferred out to your MEDC, or to the MEDC fund. Nothing too out of the ordinary on expenses for this month. For the budget for your operating fund, we did receive the September amount of $225,114. Roughly $168,835 went into your general fund, and then the other $56,278 into your MEDC fund. And that leaves a balance in that account as of right now, just a little under $2.3 million, $2.293 million in there. Only two accounts that I see are, that are a little bit, that I point out, that are a little under, would be just the adware taxes and then the fines. Otherwise, everything looks fairly smooth for the rest of it. On page number 24, I believe, just shows that your debt payments were made for the payments due on 9/1. Next ones won't be due until March 1st of next year, which will be of principal and interest. And then if there's any, just want to see if there's any other questions before I move on to the quarterly investment.
No. Thank you.
The quarterly investment report we did receive, and I apologize for the delay on this, this probably should have been received a month earlier, and I'll get with municipal accounts on that to try to get this a little bit earlier. But this just has all of your investments, money market CDs for all the transactions that took place as of ending June 30th of 2020. The next report, I would imagine, would be ready by your December 8th meeting, since I know you only meet once in November and once in December. But I'd like to try to get it, you know, try to get it to where we present it the month after. They usually get the report done by the end of, like, for example, the 9/30 should be done around the end of October, but probably not in time for the October meeting. So either we try to get it on the November or the December meeting to present, and then going forward, like, February, May, and August would be the normal months that we would try to present that report. So, as I said, apologize for the delay on that one, but we want to try to get a little bit more of a orderly schedule on that. And then the only other thing that I have is, I will be out of the office the last week of October, so I will not be at your October 27th meeting. I will plan to get the report out a week early, so then that way, if there are any questions that you may have for the September financials, I'll be here.
Hey, I had a question dealing with the budget, some of the budget items, but really for Richard, though. I noticed, going through it, you know, there were some COVID things in there, like for cleaning this, for tech, and for additional supplies, monies. Did, did we, and I've been reading that maybe the county or the federal government has, I guess, offered money for COVID-type items? Have we got line for some of that, or is that too, too difficult to do?
Well, we, we have filed the necessary paperwork. It's like, we've inserted those lines in to help us track those expenses specifically, and so that way we have a clear line to be able to pull those items. You know, since, you know, since the emergency condition is still ongoing, you know, even under the best of circumstances, it's usually a three-year wait for getting money. And so, I can't, you know, I'm used to a one-week emergency or a two-week emergency, but I can't tell you if that's a three years from the beginning of the emergency or three years from the conclusion. But, but we are tracking those items that are necessary. Obviously, we wouldn't have needed, you know, face shields, N95 mask, you know, that, things like that, other, other emergency materials that we've acquired, changes in our operations. There's, fortunately, we haven't had as much expense as some other places might have had, but we've had expenses directly related to COVID, some of them employee, employee-time-based, you know, and we're going to continue to track those and seek what reimbursement we can. So, so that's, that's what, that's what those items are referencing.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Yeah, you're right. It may be a while.
So if I were to be writing a headline, I would say that the city has received no funds, may receive some years after.
The only thing I would add to that is, we have received from the county some supplies of materials, but we've not received any cash. some supplies of materials, but we've not received any cash funds.
Okay.
Okay. Cause I know the county was promising everybody five, five hundred dollars. That went away with a new ruling. And so I thought maybe they would have had more funds to supply to the different locales. So.
Maybe they do have funds. You have to, the hoops you have to jump through. And then I've talked to other city, city, city council folks and mayors who said, and then you, you go spend your money expecting to pay back. And then there's so much red tape that they're scared they're not going to get paid back. So. Yeah. And our PPE has been free through the county. Is that correct? Chief, I know that I had received. I've been in contact with the county with Jason Mills up and, and they, if we ever needed it, we can go pick it up.
You know, we have received some supplies of PPE that came from the county. I mean, N ninety-five masks, face shields, gowns, gloves, I think some other items in there. And, you know, and, and some of those have been distributed here to city personnel. Some of it is still in storage. Should we need that? We, we got it primarily as a bulk shipment.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Engineers report? Or is there anything else? Is it time for Catherine and Chris?
All right.
Hi, Chris. All right. Good evening. If you have a report, as always, I'll hit the highlights and just tell me if you have any questions. Regarding item B, the water plant, excuse me, downtown waterline improvements. We've received comments from the water development board on the final contracts, the ones that already been executed by the contractor. They had a couple of documents. So we included those and those are, were sent over to your attorney for him to do the final review. And then we'll bring it and get those signed and get that one started. We're talking about water plant number three improvements. I know there's a separate item, so I'll save it on that. On the eighteen inch sewer extension, contractor went out to finally do the testing now that the lift station is complete. And the manhole on the shops retail center site was buried by the contractor. So Public Works got with the contract and the developer and they are raising that manhole. So once that's done, they'll be able to complete that. Moving over to page two, the drainage analysis, we met again with BGE last week, I believe that was, we went over the status of the report and the recommendations. I did receive something back from them yesterday. So I think we have some preliminary results. I haven't taken a look at it quite yet. And we also got with the grant administrator to get some clarifications on scope. And they had good responses in the fact of the JLOs kind of loosened up on some of their guidelines. So it's going to be a little bit more efficient of a project than initially was thought. So that was some good news. Lift station number one replacement. We had a final inspection on September third and the lift station was put into service on that day. So lift station generator, everything has been running and it's, the city's been running on that since September the third. No issues. I know there was a power outage at the time. And the generator kicked on as it was supposed to empower the plant and power the lift station. So everything worked there. Contractors working through final punches, items, documents, et cetera. So we're not, at your next meeting, we'll bring certificate of substantial completion to start their warranty time. And then probably depending on timeline, the meeting after that or so certificate. We also had a passment this month, passment number ten, amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars. That brings them to ninety-seven complete by value, ninety-seven percent complete by value. And again, that ninety-seven percent is based on without retainage being held. So there's still ten percent retained to tell. So it's roughly a hundred and three, a hundred and six thousand dollars in retainage that's being held on the project along with the remainder three percent. Moving down to developments in the plan reviews, we did provide plan approval for the townhomes on Pleasant Morgan. If you've gone by there, you see that they have started work on that site. Autozone, we also provided them plan approval on September second. That is next to McCoy's. We received revised plans for Hills of Town Creek on Friday. So we'll be reviewing those this week. And if they're good to go, those will be coming back to council for approval, since it is a public utilities, public streets plan set. And then Moonover Montgomery, we submitted additional comments and haven't heard back on those. Moving over to page three, I want to hit two of the warranty items real quick. For Hills of Town Creek and Emma's Way, the contractor who did that work has gone under. So the warranty items, the developer trying to get him to address, he will not be since he's no longer a company. The con, the developer has hired another contractor to help out to complete that work as well as starting Hill's section four. So there, we're getting a scope from them and a proposal as far as exactly how they're going to address the items. And so that's finally, it sounds like it's moving. Next item, at the previous council meeting, we talked about Town Creek and the potential issues with it. So Public Works went out and you can see on our report a couple of pictures from it. And as y'all noted, it's, it's full of debris and there's a lot in there. We also found, I have a picture of it, is one of the box culverts under one forty-nine is fifty, sixty percent full of sediment. So we've reached out to text dot to request, because that is their culvert, to request their assistance and getting that cleaned out. We've also reached out to the property owner and got a response saying he's more than willing to meet and discuss and see how we can get this resolved. So we'll be setting up a meeting with the property owner and then following back up with text dot to get some of these items addressed. And the last item, so going to page four, text dot in Atkins Creek. We're still continuing with those units and right away, we've been going back and forth to text dot on exactly what they're needing to get clarification. We've had to talk to a couple of different people at text dot because no one can give us the answer we're looking for. So hopefully we'll get that and they're still planning on starting that project in January. So trying to get what they need or at least get the process started with the property owners. So. And that is all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Hey, Chris, this is Kevin. I did have a question about Larry's Moonover Montgomery. Did you, did you ever reach out to him when we talked about his plans on when he's planning to build that retention pond?
Yes. And in his current plan set, so the ones that we were provided comments to on the seventeenth, it shows that the pond is going in with phase one.
Oh, it is phase one. Good.
So they had the, and that, because it would, you know, they, they had, I think it's five cottages in the very front. And then the detention pond in its full size goes in with phase one. So then when they do phase two, they don't, won't touch that pond again.
That's great. Okay, good. Thanks, Chris.
I had a general question about lift station one. What did we do with the old, oh, generator? Do we have it mothballed somewhere or?
We did. All the parts that were wanted. So Mike can, can jump in. I can't remember exactly what all he took. It was definitely the generator, I think the pumps and maybe the control panel. Mike took those over to the old sewer plant and they're in storage there. And then I, I can't remember where we said we were going to try to put at least that generator.
We're going to try to put it at lift station six, which is at the stadium. We actually got a quote to do the work from NTS last year. It was, if I remember right, and it was in the neighborhood of thirty thousand. And just kind of everything in that range was put on hold. So hoping, hoping that we can look at getting that done next year.
What, what was driving it to go to six instead of eight? I guess you know, eight, eight from Buffalo Springs.
Well, because six, well, so the whole east, I'm sorry, the whole west side of town runs through six and then five and then two. Five and two already have generators. So the only thing we're lacking on that side of town is number six. And with the development out there being that Buffalo Springs is pretty much already built out, but with the future development going in at Hills of Town Creek. We decided that six would probably be the smarter place to put that one now.
Well, we'll hope Phillips, new subdivision, will be able to handle maybe ours on gravity. All right. Thank you. And just, just be careful as far as mothballing it too long though, because you may lose the whole generator just letting it sit too long.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports as stated.
Second.
To move into second, that we approved the reports as stated. This motion is debatable, amenable, requires a majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the reports as stated, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will approve the reports as stated. Item number three under agenda, consideration of possible action regarding street closures for downtown Halloween event by H and B A. Or Richard, okay.
Thank you. H and B A is planning a Halloween event for Saturday, October thirty-first. Those plans include a car show at the community building parking lot at eleven AM. One o'clock trick or treat beginning, two o'clock parade, which is shown on the attached map. Three thirty vendors would begin for a sip and stroll setup. Four o'clock trick or treating will end and four thirty to seven thirty for sip and stroll. The police department has met with H and B A and they've reviewed the parade route. And I discussed earlier today with the chief that the police department was satisfied with the parade route. And that there may be some flexibility in the exact timing of the schedule, but this is a good general representation. So, you know, the item here is presented for action for the city council on the street closures as a council would deem fit. It's my understanding, you know, in the past, as far back as, you know, several people I've talked to here at City Hall can recall that street closures have, you know, been presented to city council for approval. From reviewing the city ordinances, those are for, meant for city administrator approval. I did not want to change anything without discussing at first with city council that in the future that unless council would refer to see all these and have all the closures run through council. We can discuss changing the ordinance, but otherwise I would approve them in the future administratively and report them to council as such. But I did want to present these here to city council since that is what council has been used to.
Going with the ordinance seems to be the legal way to go. So I'm fine with that. But we have discussed before, you know, street closure is a very broad thing and that obviously, you know, needs to respect the impact that it has on the businesses that are within the area. So setting up the the most expeditious closure and then reopening is an important part of the process.
Definitely.
Chief. When, when we close one oh five for this parade or reduce the flow through it, I think that this is the Renaissance festival weekend, I believe, isn't it? Also.
Yep.
Do we have it, do we have people or signs at, maybe at the outside of the town, the east side telling people to go around to save a delay?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, when we set those detours up both east and west, we had a, we had an actual detour. And those detour signs brought people back around to where they, where they need to come out of. Because if you don't have, if you don't have the maximum type detour, people get lost. So we made sure that they didn't get lost. We also had police officers in those areas. And all those closures came from, came from text ops because we had to close that down. And, and the council, councilwoman is exactly right. When you start doing street closure, you got to make sure that you're not affecting someone's business. And if so, they need to be notified how long their business is going to be affected. And those things need to be opened up as soon as possible once that event's over with. So yeah, we've done this several occasions. So yes, we do understand that for sure.
Can I ask, Camera, how big of a parade are you looking to have, Camera? How many entries?
At the moment, looking at fifteen floats and possibly twenty-five total vehicles.
When we talked the other day, we were talking total of twenty-five.
Right, right. Fifteen, yeah, fifteen floats with a total of twenty-five vehicles.
Okay, okay. That's not an addition to. Good. Okay.
No, 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 not addition. Sorry.
It's all right.
And what is the length that you're thinking the float will be?
They, they have been reduced to a sixteen-foot trailer.
Okay.
So that we can maintain social distancing on the floats. We will, you know, that is all, all that information is going out to anyone that joins. They will be made aware of all the restrictions and the guidelines that need to be followed for the, you know, COVID situation. So we're not, the, the, the fire department has agreed that they would like to enter, but all floats would be reduced to a sixteen-foot in length.
I was just looking at the map and seeing if you could jog up from you know, sort of down to one oh five up to college, but with the floats, I don't think you could make that turn.
We, we told, we discussed in our meeting with the chief the other day that if the trucks with the trailer couldn't make the turn at college, that maybe we could discuss at that they go through Jim's parking lot to come back. So they have an easier turn radius coming into Jim's parking lot and then going, exiting out to college on that, that way. You know, like at the edge of Jim's parking lot, if that makes sense.
That's Klepper.
Oh, Klepper. I'm sorry. Yes.
I was like, they don't touch. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Y'all, I don't have the map in front of me. Sorry.
No, I know. Well, and plus Google Maps is ridiculous because they've got our streets wrong still. So that makes it even harder.
Right. We, we did get, I did receive the email back from the officers that reviewed our proposal and they do want to make the, they've requested that the parade be earlier and the car show be later. So those two items, they have been requested that those switch, which is, you know, what I had initially thought would happen, but you know, the, the person that is helping me with the parade end of it, she kind of changed the timing. So now it's back to the original early parade, then car show, and then the trick or treating will start and then the sip and stroll part.
Okay.
Of the evening.
Yeah, we're excited to see the first year, Jennifer Skinner started this in the first year that we had, I think we estimated like twelve hundred kids came.
Yes.
It was madness. Exciting.
Yes. I think it's a good addition. I think they'll, all of this works great together.
Do you know, how do you register to be in the parade?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have a Facebook page or how do you register to be in the parade?
We have, we're trying to funnel everyone to the H and B A website at this moment.
Okay. I've got some folks asking. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Any question for you? This is Kevin. Sorry, in regards to the trick or treating festivities as it is, what types of things are we working on to, you know, maintain social distancing as far as that goes as well?
I personally, I can't answer that. That it's kind of a Jennifer, Jennifer Skinner is handling the trick or treating end. But I'm assuming that she's following the same guidelines that, that I am. You know, you, you ask that these, the participants maintain these things as far as social distancing. Family members can stay together, but you try to distance from other families. All of the businesses, that's how we're participating when we have, you know, shoppers into the building. So I know that trick or treaters will be treated the same way. Most trick or treating is done at the outside of the buildings anyway. It's, it's an in passing situation. So you don't really get a lot of people congregating. It's kind of a steady flow moving through town. So hopefully we, you know, can abide by that and we won't have to do any other situations to, you know, monitor it.
And by having the longer time period this time as well, hopefully that will stretch things out too.
Exactly. That.
Stretch out the line, but two hours instead of, I think before it was shorter. So if people know that it lasts longer, then they won't all show up at the starting gate at the same time.
Right, right. You, you don't have to rush through. Everybody will get a chance to participate and, you know, get their candy. I know that all the candy is wrapped. No one will be giving out handmade items, you know, homemade goods. It's all going to be stored. It's all going to be store bought and, you know, sealed individually.
Very good.
Same thing for floats, right? No, no candy handing off floats, right?
No, no throwing candy. No handing candy, no throwing candy. I, I promise.
That, that rule didn't seem to work so well for the Christmas parade.
No, no, it didn't. No, it didn't.
Everyone has to learn how to dance the new dance. So.
Everybody did a great job.
We'll, we'll learn, we'll learn as we go along.
Yes. There's.
Don't get me wrong. I was running up to grab it. Sorry. Go ahead.
So Richard, I'd like to go ahead and give you direction to follow the ordinance as it is written. I think that is the most logical way to proceed. I think that, um, with you and the chief, uh, taking care of things, again, as per the ordinance and the chief as per his, uh, occupation as police chief, that's the best way to take care of this.
Thank you.
Does that need a second?
Maybe a big. Uh, well, I don't think it needs to be a motion to follow an ordinance, but a big hurrah wouldn't help. Or her father.
Amen.
Hurrah.
You don't really need a motion because it is the, the, the city code already authorizes it.
Okay.
But I think Richard was probably wanting some consensus.
Good. All right.
Thank you, Richard and chief.
Yep. Good job. Right. Then, uh, next on the agenda, number four, update on Water World three project. I believe this was tabled earlier.
Right. And this is, this is brought back tonight as an informational update for no action needed. Uh, as discussed at the last meeting, the project is on hold pending inspection of the ground storage tank. Uh, the timing of trying to get a diver to inspect the tank while it's still in operation, uh, was over six weeks out, which means draining and inspecting the tank physically from the inside will, uh, be the best way that we can accomplish this and quickly do it. So the engineers have confirmed that the contractor for the project or the contractor for the project is willing to hold their bid price long enough for the inspection to be performed. The tentative timeline for inspection, uh, is to drain the tank and conduct the physical inspection in the first week of October and provide an inspection report and recommendation to the city council, uh, for August, or sorry, October 16th meeting. And so city council should be able to act on the project, you know, in October. So, so I'm sorry, the inspection report recommendation for October 16th. And then the second meeting in October is, what is that, the 27th? So we'll have that in time, uh, well ahead of that meeting, uh, for direction at that point, based on the actual conditions of the tank. So there's no specific action needed, but if there's any additional questions, uh, myself, staff or the engineer, we can take those.
What does the internal inspection consist of? Is it just a visual?
It's a visual with metal thickness ratings at points. So I've reached out to a couple of options for more of a scan, uh, options. So I'm waiting to hear back on some recommendations and pricing on that. Uh, but at a minimum, it's point thicknesses throughout the tank and then a visual inspection.
Okay. And you said you had like a grid before, right? Where, where you.
Correct. We divided it into eighths. And so we took it to eighths oriented one way and we'll do the same thing going around.
So you, you got some comparisons to look at then.
Correct. And then also I know with this project, there's a handful of other questions and we'll put together a summary. But we are wrapping up and I have them, I just need to do a final review of the cost estimates for the conversion to a liquid bleach instead of gas chlorine. Uh, we have that complete. I just need to do a final look and then I'll send that over to staff. So they can take a look as well as some of the alternatives that we talked about of different tank sizes and different pump sizes. Uh, we're working with the contractor to have him give us what his bid price would have been for those different items. So we can tie all that together in our discussion when we have it.
Great. Thank you.
Hey Chris, there's a cooling tower with this tape?
That's correct.
Are you going to inspect it also?
Oh, excuse me. So the, no, the cooling tower is part of the project, but no, the current cooling tower not being inspected. Uh, I know what we had talked about last time was doing some additional look at some of the materials and some of the conditions that are out there. And the thought would be is that when we get the contractor out there before he orders parts to do some of that. So we're not taking it offline, uh, but we'll get with staff and public works and if it's something we can take offline for a short period to do some of those inspections, uh, while we're out there, the first week of October, if we can do that.
Have you, have you run across any old cooling tower with any type of algae growing on them?
I would need to do some digging on what the ones have, you know, it's chlorinated water that's going in. So, I mean, it should remain relatively clear. Uh, but that's, I haven't had a chance to look at specifically, um, that's been an issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And the next, the agenda is executive session. I see that Richard has sent out, uh, a new Zoom invite. The city council, the items listed specifically under this heading, or the items listed above, an executive closed session as permitted by law, including if they meet the qualifications in section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, 551.073 deliberation, yes, 551.074 personnel matters, 551.076 deliberation regarding security devices, and 551.087 deliberation regarding economic and development negotiations of chapter 551 of the government code of the state of Texas. Number five, adjourned to closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter 551 of the government code in accordance with the authority contained in the following. A, 551.071 consultation with attorney and B, section 551.072 deliberation regarding this real property. It is exactly, um, 6:58 and we will adjourn into. See ya.
By 2023 at least.
Goodness.
I'm going to check and see if we can find out what happened with IT.
Okay.
Well, I bet you that you were talking to Tom. Were you on your phone, Tom? Maybe that's what we heard through the zoom as you're talking to through his phone.
Yeah, he was, he was trying, he was calling to call in to the executive session and he finally connected. That's why you heard us.
Yeah. Yeah. It was just weird. Okay. So it is, uh, 7:21 and we are back in, um, a session. We are going to reconvene into open session. Possible action from executive session, number six, consideration of possible action if necessary on matters deliberated in closed executive session.
All right. Uh, so with that said, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city administrator and attorney to move forward regarding negotiations of real property and direct the mayor to some all associated contracts.
Second.
It is permitted and seconded that we direct the city admin, uh, attorney and a city administrator to move forward regarding negotiations of real property and direct the mayor to sign all associated documents and contracts. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of directing the city administrator attorney to move forward regarding, uh, negotiations, negotiations of real property and to direct the mayor to sign all associated documents and contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the majority in favor. Um, council inquiries.
Yeah, I have one there. I, I'd like to thank, uh, you, I would like to thank Susan, Dave, the chief, Lieutenant Bellmoss, all of them for helping me out with the, uh, COVID drive through free testing that was held back on September the 5th here at Mount, uh, Mount Sinai and also the volunteers and Pastor Davis for reaching out. And it showed that, that the community could come together and, uh, really accomplish something worthwhile. And, and so going forward, uh, I told them we can look at other things bringing here, whether it's a blood draw, mammogram, prostate cancer, all of those things to, to reach out. And also want to thank, uh, Chick-fil-A for providing lunch for everyone. And that was a big deal. And, uh, we just want to thank all our volunteers that we can work, do things together here in Montgomery. And, uh, and it was free and thank everybody for what they did.
TJ, good job of organizing. I know you worked several weeks on that. So glad to help.
Three days.
Well, you met with him, didn't you meet with him like a couple of weeks earlier?
Oh, I called him, but they would never.
Return.
For some reason they wouldn't work with me, but we got it done. It's, it's way to do it. So we just want to thank everybody for, for what they did. And going forward, we, we got a lot of other things that, that we could do here in the community. So like that, those projects that was bringing, bringing together. Uh, one of the things that, uh, you know, even little things, ideas that, that, that we have, the water bills and all that type of thing, we'll have to share with you later. When you got time. Thanks.
Very good. And TJ, if I, if I may, if it's okay with you, would you mind telling, um, tell me again about the, um, the prayer?
Uh, this. Oh, yeah. It's the, uh, it's a young lady called me. She's, I think it's Cheryl Giggelman. They having a, they want to have a prayer, uh, vigil for the city Saturday at Cedar Brick Park, starting at nine o'clock. All those who are interested in prayer, come out. She just want to pray for the city, pray for the officials, the leaders of the city. Uh, and try, try to bring some unity within the community. We talk about unity, but we don't really have unity here in Montgomery. So we, she are trying to work at establishing something like that to reaching across lines, uh, various lines and just offer a little prayer in the community. She want to do it at Cedar Brick Park, uh, Saturday, 26th, starting at nine o'clock. And all those who want to come out or interested or know, uh, she said, feel free to come.
Thanks TJ. I'll see you there.
And what time is it? Nine, nine AM?
Nine AM.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to post something about that on our, um, our city enforcement page or separation of church and state kind of thing? Or what, what are your thoughts on that? Anybody?
Maybe. We'll do some follow-up on it and, uh, and, and, uh, and see what we can do.
Very cool.
Well, that's everything. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a whole bunch of seconds. Did you get that, Susan? Um, all this, there's been a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. I don't think we'll have any no's. The motion carries. It is 7:20 during this evening. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.